To start it off by a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here and now the purpose of the meeting is to consider, discuss, and receive public comments on the Post Economic Development Incentive Grant Agreement. And with that, I would like to open the public hearing and like to call on Reed Williams.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be before you on this momentous and significant night to present Project Polaris to you all, now publicly known as Vulcan Elements. This is a significant night for this town and this community. As I said, it represents an opportunity to welcome one of the most consequential economic development projects in our state's history and quite frankly, our nation's history to Benson. Vulcan Elements is a manufacturer of rare earth magnets, critical components for advanced machines and electronic devices that power today's innovation economy. Their products support AI data centers, semiconductor fabrication equipment, satellites, drones, robotics, electric motors, and nearly every major military platform. With your favorable consideration tonight of the agreement before you, it is their intent to open their first major US manufacturing facility right here in Benson. As discussed at last week's public hearing, this historic $1 billion investment will span more than 1 million square feet, will feature 10,000 metric tons of annual manufacturing capacity, and create 1,000 good-paying jobs with an average salary of nearly $90,000, almost three times the town average. Vulcan Elements and their team have conducted an extensive national search that began earlier this year considering highly competitive offers from other communities across the country. As their CEO stated last week, they look forward to being a great employer, a community partner, and a good neighbor here in Benson. This project is a culmination of extensive collaboration at the highest levels, public and private, local and state and federal. And tonight Benson stands at the threshold of an extraordinary opportunity for long-term growth and shared prosperity. I want to thank Vulcan and their team for considering North Carolina, Johnston County, and the town of Benson. This community and our region will benefit for generations to come from their commitment and investment. Others who deserve a thanks include US Department of Commerce Secretary Howard Lutnick, US Senators Ted Budd and Tom Tillis, Congressman Brad Knott, Governor Josh Stein, North Carolina Commerce Secretary Lee Lilly, Senator Benton Sari, Representative Larry Strickland, North Carolina Department of Transportation Johnston County Commissioners, Chris Johnson and his advisory board, Alliance Board of Directors, the Johnston Community College, Golden Leaf Foundation, South River Electrical Membership Cooperative, and the town staff. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to the town's attorney, Ike Parker, to present the legal incentive agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. And I will keep this pretty brief. The board knows about this from the meeting last week and those proceedings wherein we met in joint with the county. The Economic Development Incentive Grant Agreement that is before you is nearly identical to the county's. It requires an investment of $826,290, yeah, just over $826 million, so nearly a billion dollars. 900 jobs created. That's a cascading step-down grant which will provide a grant to the company of real property or tied to real property tax, adwarement tax paid of 90% in years one through five, 80% in years six through eight, 70% in years nine through 10, 60% year 11, and 50% 12 through 15. And for personal property, a year one through eight is 75% of a grant, and year nine through 15, 50% a year grant. There's one small difference there in our percentage for two of those years from the county. So that's, I think, really the only substantive difference than the grant the county approved last week when you met with them. It requires those jobs be created. If the numbers aren't reached by the company, then there's provision in the agreement for an allocation or recalculation of that grant to reduce it. The total grant is, well, this is based on current rates and current assessments, but it's just over $52 million. But of course, those numbers can change over time. The grant's really tied, remember, to a percentage, so it's not a dollar figure. I believe this was something you discussed or was discussed at the meeting last week, but one of the things to keep in mind in your consideration is that the grant is incentive to the company, but for the grant, they would not have located here. So that's no small piece of the puzzle in terms of the foundation for, your legal foundation for why you're approving the grant. Are there any questions about the agreement? Obviously, the agreement that I've put out there in front of everybody at your desk tonight or at your table tonight does have that, is the last agreement from the company's representatives, does have that small change in it from what I sent you late last week or over the weekend.
If the board has no questions, I'd like to introduce Scott Glover from Vulcan Elements.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for having me. My name is Scott Glover. I'm Vulcan Elements Chief Commercial Officer. It's great to be here. I'm really happy to be here to speak on behalf of Vulcan Elements. I would say Vulcan site selection process was extremely competitive, looked at sites and communities across the country. And the generous proposal that you're considering tonight shows what we believe all along, that your community wants to support business and job creation by companies like Vulcan Elements. If approved, the incentive offer here will allow us to choose Benson and Johnston County over other locations. We're excited to be a part of this community, and it's a relationship that we see as a cornerstone for our partnership for decades to come. I also just want to say a quick word about our commitment to doing the right by this community. Beyond creating good-paying jobs, the health and safety of our community are the highest priority no matter what. We pledge to be responsible members of this community as we want to be here for decades to come. We're all part of this mission together, and that depends on the health, the healthy workforce and supportive community, and it's too important to fail. Vulcan is committed to the absolute highest standard of safety for our team and for this community. We do not conduct mining, heavy chemical processing, or other environmentally damaging activities. I want to be absolutely clear, that's not how we do things at Vulcan Elements. We've taken significant precautions when designing our engineering processes, our equipment in our facility to ensure the higher standards of safety. When you see images on the internet of magnet factories, what you're seeing is usually from China, where environmental safety and labor standards are basically non-existent. Those are not representative of Vulcan's process, and those factories would not be approved to operate here in the United States. For example, no water from our process is discharged to the sewer system. We operate in a closed-loop system, meaning that it's sealed and it recirculates the water. It's used over and over. Any water that needs to be discarded or collected will be collected and shipped off-site for proper waste treatment. Our processing for our materials is also done in inert enclosures, meaning that it takes place in a sealed chamber to maintain full control both inside and out of the system. The entire process is monitored by automated systems that meet the highest standard of safety. Safety of our workers and our team and our community will always be the first and foremost focus, and it'll always be that way. Thank you again for having me. We look forward to a great relationship and partnership for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
I think that's...
Does anybody have questions overall? Any comments or questions? Is there anyone else present that would like to speak? Anyone here that would like to speak for this proposal? Anyone here that would like to speak against this proposal?
Hey, Max, I think the young lady is having a hard time understanding.
I'm having a hard time understanding everybody.
Did you want to speak?
Oh, no. I just... Did you ask who's for?
Okay, good. Okay, great. So I guess we'll close the public comment now. Any more discussion?
I have a question, and maybe seeing it, I'm not really seeing it. The 900 full-time positions that will be over here, I mean, what is the timeframe to hire 900?
It is...
Did I use that?
2029.
Yeah, through the end of 2029. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And it varies over the next couple of years. They already have began discussions with the community college about training, the trainers that'll be training the employees at the facility. And Golden Leaf, it was released in the news today, and I think it was mentioned at last week's meeting, Golden Leaf Foundation has awarded a $3.6 million grant that will be used to procure training equipment specifically for this project.
Yeah, I think I read an article there, going to start training mid-next year.
That's the goal. Yes, sir.
What type of, what program is JCC going to be offering in order for, because someone stopped me yesterday. They were like, what would the qualifications be? I'm like, I'm not for sure. What program? I'm like, I can't tell you any, but let me find out. So, yeah, I had a young guy to ask me. He says, you work on the board? I said, well, I'm part of the town board. He says, what is the qualifications for those jobs that's coming? And what do I need to, you know?
Sure. I'd say a lot of that's still being defined and worked out.
Okay.
But as far as...
Because it's not the biotech program.
Correct. So it'll be a customized training program specifically tied to this industry. But there won't be any barriers to entry that I'm aware of. So it'll all take place at the Four Oaks facility, training facility in the incubator lab there. But they're still working out the criteria, how long the training will take place, what programs are in that training. There's three different training modules, and I'm not sure of the capacity of each one of those modules, but I think by the end of 2026, they intend to hire close to 200, and it's staggering. 200, and it's staggered, as we said, over through the end of 2029.
I was wondering, I saw them like, I don't know how many, how they're going to be able to train that many people by that timeframe, but it's going to be...
In phases.
In phases, okay.
And Chris and I will be glad to report back as we get more information and the community college releases more of that information about the training program, we'll share that with you all.
Yeah, because...
Just to add on, we don't want, again, we don't want to hold back on to applying. We're going to refer a lot of skills across many different areas, including, you know, maintenance techs, welding through operators that are doing metal processing, you know, broad stroke, so a lot of skill sets require.
Great, because people are definitely asking about the jobs.
If I may, also Lynn Andrews met with the company, and they're excited about the possibility of starting to implement some of the things into the curriculum here at the high school. So just like with the bio works, how they're starting to put small little model classes there so that they don't necessarily have to wait till they graduate to go get a great job here. So we're excited about that. And then, I mean, obviously, there's engineers, there's things, working with, working with our military, we're excited about that, and on loaning or as they transition out of the military to be able to do, to work here. But as a small business person myself, just having 90, having 1,000 people with $90,000 means so much to this community for our small businesses. I can't say that enough. When they have, when they have disposable income to shop and to support our restaurants and our small businesses, that is, that is the blessing that this town is going to receive.
Reed, can I put you on the spot?
Sure.
I don't know if you're prepared for this tonight, but I was just thinking to put something on the record when we discussed this in closed session a few weeks ago. You gave estimates on some numbers that the town of Benson might see from this. Is that something that we can put on the record? Have you got those estimates with you by chance?
I don't, but my memory's a little accurate. I think, well, I'll let you ask a question.
I was just going to see if you could get, that way we could put something in the record about what we're looking as a dollar amount that this impacts for just the town.
Based...
Well, if I may interject, because I made the public comment last week about what this means to the town. Obviously, as your attorney said, it's all going to be based on what the company pays in. So the key thing is, what we're looking at is the percentage, because if they pay more, then obviously the town's going to get paid more. And it's also going to be based on what the tax assessor says. They may spend a billion dollars, but then the tax assessor goes out there and says, well, the building's only worth $900 million, whatever that figure is. So as I understand it, based on the full amount, if the tax assessor says, you know, they spend a billion dollars and it gets taxed at a billion dollars, it's close to $900,000 for year one. And that, one and two, and then it increases because obviously the percentages start stepping down. So now, when I say year one, that's at the full amount, you know, so it may, it's going to take, obviously, they've got 500,000 square feet, they're going to need to expand that. There's no equipment in there, so the town is, you know, there's going to be a benefit to the town as the ramp, this period ramps up, because the grant won't start until a few years out, so.
Thank you, Chris.
But the 900,000, I want to make sure you understand, it is based on the tax office, and who knows what the tax office...
I just wanted to put something out there that way that people, if they're listening online, that they could say 90% of a number that we don't say is nothing, really. So we wanted to say, hey, this is, this is big. I wanted them to understand how big it is.
As I understand it, and looking at the numbers, even during the grant period, this will be the largest taxpayer during, I mean, for the town of Benson. So that's how big, sometimes when you hear billion on the news and trillions, it's kind of tough to wrap your mind around it. I think if I'm not mistaken, what it would take, and I think I sent it to the mayor, and I hate to put him on the spot, but it basically is the equivalent of about 1,500 homes would have to be built at $350,000 to equate the amount of revenue. So that, so that's, that's when you start talking about that, that's, that's kind of what you have to think about, so.
Thank you so much, Chris, and Reed.
Yes, sir. Seems sort of like to me too, that while it's very important, this, the money coming to town is very important and all that, and the economic development part that's coming from this is going to be important, most important thing is our national defense. This is a really important thing, more important than we've ever had for anything around here ever, ever, ever. So I can't tell you how excited I am, and I know everybody here is too, that's my way too. With that, if I'd like to honor me the most?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the economic development incentive grant agreement as read to the Project Polaris, Vulcan Project.
Any discussion? On the paper? Pardon? Does it care? Thanks, everybody. So, I don't know what they have, I made my final remarks just then, right? Could I hear a motion to adjourn?
I made that motion.
On the paper? To adjourn?